Good evening. Welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. We are in the Robert de Leo Senior Center. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Ilo. Councilor DeMarco?
Here.
Councilor Costigan?
Here.
Councilor Munson? Councilor Tassinieri?
Here.
Councilor Swope?
Present.
Councilor DeRoz?
Here.
Vice President Belcher?
Here.
President Latere?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge. By Councilor Tassinieri. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes have been circulated for the April 1st, 2025, meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Vice President Belcher. Second by Councilor Costigan or Councilor DeMarco. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. General information recommendation, we have two items on the agenda. First, the citations. Citations are going to be given to Meredith Hurley and Sakko Gigerian. Two remarkable people. And they're getting an award for their work with the CLER program. And the award is, well, the acronym is PAA. And the correct verbiage is the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative Teams Leadership Award. Now, the CLER program in Winthrop started a little over a decade ago, and Meredith and Sakko are founding members of that. It's joint effort with Public Health, with the Fire Department, with the Police Department, using data to find and help people struggling with substance abuse, mental health issues, domestic violence. And over the past decade or so, they've helped thousands of people. So, we would like to present citations to both, and they read, "Town of Winthrop, be it known that the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its congratulations to Winthrop Police Lieutenant Sakko Gigerian as well as Meredith Hurley, and recognition of receiving Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative Team Leadership Award. On behalf of the town of Winthrop, especially all the individuals who have benefited from the Winthrop CLER program, of which you are a founding member, we extend our most sincere congratulations to you and offer our best wishes in your future endeavors. Our community is grateful for all that you do for those who face challenges with substance abuse, mental health, domestic violence, and your input with Veterans Affairs and the immense resources you provide, given this 15th day of April, 2025." Thank you so much for all you do, not just in this, but day in and day out, protecting lives both ways, in different ways. We thank you and would like you to come up and receive your citation.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Yes?
Thank you so much. Crazy. I'd like to, Jim, Jim, we have to announce, he just took a late, early flight to get here from DC.
Get out.
Yep. Yeah, he took an early flight to get here.
I'm getting there.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, he's something. He changed, yeah, yeah.
Right. Should we? All right. Good job, Shannon. I know how proud our town manager is of these two, and I would like to ask him if he'd like to say a few words on their behalf.
Is that better? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Council President. It goes without saying, obviously, proud of the CLER team, proud of certainly Meredith and Sakko. You know, this, I've worked in several communities over the years, and I say it all the time, everyone else is trying to figure it out, and Winthrop already has. You know, so kudos to you guys and the hard work you do. You know, you'll hear during my budget presentation later, I mean, you know, a lot of the funding that comes from the CLER team is grant funded. You know, with everything going on in the world and stuff, we really need to pay attention to that because some of those grants are starting to go away. So, we need to, as a community, make sure that we prioritize this and the good work they do, and, you know, make sure that they've got the funding they need moving forward. But, you know, congratulations and kudos to them. Thanks, you.
This program is a standard that is used around the state. We're so, again, proud of both of them for being founding members of this and just carrying this on for over a decade now. Thank you again. Now, on general information, we're also going to have a little post-election wrap-up here. Going to ask Chief Wiley to speak, as well as Superintendent Howard, and I just want to say, on behalf of the council, how grateful we are to this community for stepping up. We had three questions on the ballot and all three passed. I just want to say a word about, obviously, our gratefulness for the people who voted for this, and I want to speak a little bit to the people who voted no for this. There were people that might have voted no because they didn't think it was a worthwhile project or that the funding was really needed, but I think, I would venture a guess that the vast majority of these people voted because, you know, times are tough and they just couldn't find the money in their regular budgets. And I just want to reach out to those people to say that this is the council's job, the superintendent's job, to make sure that on the council side, this project comes in on or below that budget and be extremely cognizant of that, and for the schools and the town to be stewards of the money that's been allotted by the citizens of this town and how grateful we are. And we want to make sure we do our very best to earn your trust and earn your respect because this, Winthrop is a better place right now for those three questions being passed. It's going to give our schools the opportunity to maintain the progress that they've made and continue to go forward, and it's going to give our firefighters, who put their lives on the line day in and day out, a state-of-the-art facility that they could continue doing the work they do. So, again, my vast appreciation on behalf of the council to the citizens of this community for stepping up, and I'd like to ask Superintendent Howard to step up and say a few words.
No, that's not that I need it. As we all know. I'm not good with this, so. Congratulations to Sakko and Meredith, just to start. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that the work that they do in the community certainly impacts the school district. I can call Meredith on a dime, and she does answer, and I can call Sakko and be assured that there's going to be an answer, no matter what the issue is. So, not only do they support the town and the community, it's, you know, in general, but they're always there for the school department, whether it's funding, working to partner on grants and be able to access the resources that the CLER department has to offer. We have 2,011 students in the school, and those students have parents and families, and those parents and families are benefiting from the work that the CLER program provides for them. So, super excited for you guys. Trophies are a lot. You get to hang them up, you can frame them, and, you know, in school, we know that, so. In terms of the override, President Latere, you know, talked about the folks that voted no, and, you know, we'd like to acknowledge that as well. We understand that there are folks that struggle to be able to afford it. I do think that the investment in the community is going to be really clear to everybody. And I echo what the town is going to do in terms of making sure the fire department comes in on or below budget. The school department does plan to continue the good work that we have been doing in managing the budget for the last, I can speak to myself, for the last eight years, in being transparent with our budget, what our services are, and continue to seek grants as they're available to offset the budget. Having a stabilization fund for us is something I think that is going to make the length of an override last longer than we could have wished for, and we'll be very cognizant of that in work with the town council, if needed, to access that funding source, and hopefully, we won't need to for quite some time, so that that can extend the length. I'd like to personally thank the override committee and all those who volunteered to educate our community. They did so by providing factual information about the state of our schools, our budgets, both past and present, and the value of providing a quality education to the students and families of our community, and clearly investing in our future. The passing of the school stabilization account, as I said, will allow the district to maintain a sense of financial stability in coming years and hopefully allow us to continue to provide a high-quality education in a safe and supportive learning environment. I think, when I think about how the override and the debt exclusion for the fire station went, and the work that was done by so many people that got together on committees and groups and volunteers, and it brings me back to the old theory, you know, as a young kid, I was not an academic animal, wasn't my forte, but athletics was. I mean, athletics is what got me through school, and it was about a team approach and how to approach things as a team to eventually win a championship, such as our most recent high school hockey championship. And I feel like our community came together, the fire department and the school department, with the help of a lot of people, investing in a thought and a theory that if we come together as one, we certainly will be stronger. And being on the same ballot was difficult at first because I felt like we were pitting one thing against the other. So, presenting to the community two large investments in the community that they had to make a choice for one, because that's what the natural habit of a human is, when you see something that's very large and it's, you know, concerning to you that you have to pick one, and sometimes that's just what you see when there's two things on a ballot. And I think that the involvement of the fire department and the school department together, supporting each other and talking about how both of these initiatives are actually one initiative, and it's an investment in the community, and I think that's what pushed us over the top. So, I also want to thank the fire department for agreeing to partner with the school district because we're an odd group, as you know. However, the strategy and the thought process, and I think the truth of what we were going for, which was a full investment in the community, really worked, and we're very grateful for it. So, just a general, and thank you to the town council as well for stepping up and, you know, supporting both major investments for our town.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just wanted to take a minute to reiterate a lot of your comments or echo your comments. Thank you to everybody who came out and voted on that day. It was, for those of you who remember, it was a really cold, rainy, windy day. Whether you voted for it or against it, we're thankful that you all came out in the big numbers that you did for a special election. I'd like to also thank a couple of people in particular. I'd like to thank the entire town council, the town manager for his support on this. Without your support, this never would have got on the ballot. This was over 40 years in the making. We've been waiting for this for decades to get this accomplished. Special thank you to the council president for all of his dogged determination to get this through. For everybody who wasn't aware of it, every firehouse building committee meeting, he sat at his own meetings, came to every coffeehouse hour or every event that we had, he was there for every one of them, and we greatly appreciate it. It was recognized, and we appreciate it. The members of the firehouse building committee, we greatly appreciate all the effort that you put in to get this information out. It was huge support from local 1070, from the firefighters. Their support helped push this over the top, it really did. And there were a couple of members I would like to adhere and a couple that I'd like to specifically mention. Firefighters Kevin Gorman and Devin Rackow, Captain David Higginbotham, and Tyler Gillis, for their work on the social media side of it was huge. I'm incredibly, incredibly excited for the direction, for the upward mobility. This is a huge improvement for our department in general. It's not just the building. This is going to be a huge, dramatic improvement in the service that we provide to the community. And lastly, I just want to say, as the co-chair of the firehouse building committee, absolute promise to you that we will do everything we can to bring this project in, under budget and on time. We will not be, we're not going to be spending, crazy spending here. We're going to pinch pennies, but we're not going to cut corners. We're going to get this done on time and under budget, and thank you, thank you to everybody. This was decades in the waiting. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Scott. Much appreciated your help. Both you guys worked a tremendous amount of hours over the past several months trying to put this all together and make the community aware of the needs of both projects, so thank you for both. Public hearing, we have a handful of public hearings tonight. The first, it's almost more of a formality, the town manager is to present the town council with the fiscal '26 budget. Within the charter, it states timelines as to when the council has to officially receive the budget, timeline for working on the budget. It will then be, the town manager will present to FinCom tomorrow evening, and those meetings will be taking place basically every week with department heads and such to go over budgets, line by line. I'll tell you, the Finance Commission does an incredible job and has done an incredible job for a lot, a lot of years. I see the chairman here, Matt Gorkowitz is here, who has spent several years on the committee. Obviously, Karen Chavis has spent the 20 years with me on the committee, and can't thank her enough. But, all the members, it's incredibly grateful to have them. It's a combination, the Finance Commission is a combination of the Citizens Finance Committee along with the finance subcommittee of the town council. So, they will be putting in a tremendous amount of hours over the past few, over the next few months. I'll ask the town manager to make his formal presentation to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We'll be doing the full budget presentation during the spring forum. We gave the books out tonight. I did meet with the Finance Commission last week as well, myself and Finance Director Sarah Johnson, how we did do an overview of the budget of the draft, so they, now that you've got the official copy tonight, they'll get their books tomorrow night, when Sarah and I will be with them again. We're excited to start the process, certainly in a little bit of limbo leading up to this, you know, waiting for the ballot votes on April 5th, so we're happy to move forward and present the budget. So, we'll get into more details when we get to the spring forum.
Thank you. So, officially, this public hearing has been opened, and I will ask the council if you have any questions on it. Now, I know we're just receiving the budget, there will be many questions over the next few months, but if you have any questions right away, please feel free to ask, as well as the public that is here, if you have any questions, again, you haven't even seen it yet, but if you have any questions on the budget, positive or negative, or thoughts on the budget that you want to throw out there first, you can feel free to do that now. If not, we will close that public hearing, and we will go to the second public hearing, which is on Winthrop Taxi Fee Increase. So, we will open that public hearing. It's a little strange situation when you have a business that has to, you know, face certain times, financial times, like we all do, and some businesses can just raise the prices as they wish, Winthrop Taxi cannot. They have to come to the council with that request. So, we are opening a public hearing now, and this went to, I'll ask, who did you have this last night, Max? I'll ask the vice president to speak on this first.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, according to our ordinances, the taxi company needs to come to the council to request a fare increase, get posted for a public hearing after 14 days, and then whatever's voted on by the council takes effect after seven days. So, this is not meant to be overly involved by the council, it's just meant to, my belief is that it's meant to make sure that the citizens are aware of these increases. So, Mr. Clouin from Winthrop Taxi came to the Rules and Ordinances Committee meeting last night. A few things came up in the committee, one of them being this ordinance, and is this something we want to look at? I'm waiting to hear back from Attorney Sipoleta if this is based in mass general law, or if it is something that we have the authority to kind of adjust, but based on the rising cost of living, the cost of repairs, cost of fuel, these things, the fare increase does make sense. The request was to increase it by $1 for in-town service, so it would become $9 for nonseniors and $8 for seniors within town to town.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this fare increase, on the council or in the public? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this increase, from the council or from the public? Thank you very much. This will be brought up in Old Business, and it will be voted on tonight by the council. We'll close that public hearing, and we will open up another public hearing for amend town fees to include fee for utility company projects. As of now, if a utility company, pick on National Grid, comes in and needs to do something, we need to have a public hearing for them. We post it in the paper, we have to advertise it. We have been picking up the cost of that. We want to change the ordinances, so now the utility company will be responsible for that, and it will be a $250 fee. So, we will open the public hearing for that. I'd like to ask if Director Callow would have anything to say on this?
You know, I think it makes a lot of sense to be able to cover those fees. That said, just to be clear, all utility companies still have the full HPW permit for road openings. That permit process is still in place between the head. But, it certainly makes sense and makes them financially responsible for the advertising and compensation. And what the...
And this is not a practice that we're trying to invent the well. We are following the vast majorities of other communities within the Commonwealth to do this. Anyone on the council have anything to say in favor or against? All right. Public hearing is closed. Public comment, this is the first public comment period of the night.
All right, so let's turn my on. Adrian.
Yeah, thank you. Celeste Bearhew at Precinct 1. Want to start off by congratulating the town on passing both initiatives for the firehouse and the school. I think it was a Herculean effort, I think it was a good call to team those votes up. And I know in my house, it wasn't an easy conversation. A lot of you folks are up there addressing the no's. I think my favorite husband wanted to divorce me when he saw the sign show up on our lawn that day, because quite candidly, we keep going back to the well. So, I really, in addition to congratulating, I want to encourage the town council to not, to avoid keeping us from being eligible for opportunities to receive funding for the town at the state level, and then also, too, to proactively seek new opportunities for revenue streams. Can't keep going back to the well on that.
And then the second item I have to talk about today, I am a member of the CDICR Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, and as such, I wanted to formally request that we, as we look forward to June, that we extend a proclamation for both Juneteenth and Pride. They are both federally recognized observances, all of Pride Month in Juneteenth, and I think that this is something we should be doing instinctively and reflexively. And I'll follow up with an email on all federally recognized observances to town council, and I recommend that we, again, instinctively set forth proclamations for each of these and even expand it. And I want to set out an invitation to anybody who is interested. We've heard feedback in the past of folks who feel very close to groups, ethnicities, et cetera, that they identify with in having observances here in town, and as a member of the CDICR and a member of the community, I wholeheartedly embrace the opportunity to advance recognition in support of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon.
Hi, Shannon Pullos, Precinct 3. I wasn't going to speak, but after that comment, I'd like to. There is absolutely no reason why the state should not be giving us funding. We are in full compliance with respect to any law, whether there are folks that would like to make others think that we're not. We're a special community. I think that the town stepped up and voted, and although I completely agree that we should be good fiduciaries, we should not let the narrative that the state should be holding us hostage to continue to perpetrate, because that's actually not true. It's false. So, it would be great if people could stop saying that. I would love that, I do love the fact, the acknowledgement that there are a lot of people that voted no, and whether it could just be, you know, fundamental just disagreement, lack of affordability, et cetera, and I think that, I had made a statement at one point saying that this budget season was going to be easier, and then I actually reflected on it, and I thought, you know what, it actually should be harder, because I think we should hold ourselves to a higher standard to making sure that we're being good fiduciaries. I think that more than ever, our state officials are actually pretending like it's their money. It's not. It's taxpayer money. And so, I think more than ever, I think that we need to all hold ourselves to that standard, that we're actually fiduciaries of taxpayer money, and hold ourselves accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cassie Woodhouse, Precinct 6. The regulations have been finalized for the MBTA zoning law, so in case you haven't heard about that, our new deadline is mid-July. At that point in time, we won't be in compliance with all state law. The state has always had the right to control the zonings that are set for all of the communities, and they have allowed that to be done at a local level. 3A still allows that. We had a plan that was created by our planning board and is very, very sensitive to the needs of our community and won't result in any more units. So, I do think that it's important to relate all of the facts regarding that to everyone, and I hope that the council will find a way to reconsider that vote so that we can continue to get grants from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. The other public comments. All right, seeing none. Committee reports. Finance.
Yes, Finance Committee met council president prior to this meeting, and we did discuss the two motions that came to us from yourself, actually, and we'll talk about it later in Old Business.
Thank you. And before I go on to the next committee report, I would just, I mentioned the Finance Commission, and the council Subcommittee on Finance is chaired by Council DeRoz and also represented with Council Tassinieri and Vice President Belcher, and also Shannon Pullos is in the audience, who has been a member of the Finance Commission for the past several years. So, again, the importance of budget season and having input on the budget is imperative. As much as we live and breathe this every day, it is still nice sometimes to have a fresh face and a new perspective on things, and I encourage not only, obviously, the commission, who was incredibly involved, but I encourage other councilors to attend these meetings to be as cognizant and clear on the budget as humanly possible. Public health and safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met today to discuss the National Grid proposal that was presented last time, April 1st, in our last meeting, and we do endorse their work, and let me read the motion and for your consideration. That the town grant permission to National Grid to install underground facilities on Shirley Street, beginning at the point of approximately 180 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Shirley Street and Taft Avenue, and continually approximate six feet into the northwest direction. Install approximately six feet of two to four PVC DP SHC. Yeah, 60 conduits effort in Shirley Street from existing pool 348 to private property at 1,001 to 1,015 Shirley Street, or take any other action there, too. Just to, to just put that in language that all of us understand, there is, this is a very, it's a very small project. It's to install electricity for our new, a new construction. It'll take one to two days. It won't disrupt traffic that much, there will be a policeman there. So, this is something that we do with new construction, and it's pretty routine. It was endorsed by Mr. Callow, so I'm hoping that we will, it came out as a favorable recommendation from our committee for the entire town council to consider.
No, I have none.
School Department report. The school department met last evening. It was an abbreviated meeting, as there were multiple meetings scheduled for the room. There was just discussion on the continuation of budget season, getting ready. Also discussion on, you know, we're already approaching the fourth quarter, the spring vacation, school vacation is next week. It's amazing how just time flies, and after that, we'll be starting to talk about graduation in the 26, 25, 26 year. It's just incredible how fast the school year goes by. Update on policy committees. Board of Appeals had a special meeting. 386 Revere Street was granted relief. 54 Wilshire, there was a motion to continue to May 15th meeting. 67 Woodside, there was a motion to continue to the May 15th meeting. 63 to 69 Putnam, relief was granted. 25 Pleasant Street, motion to continue to the May 15th meeting. Planning Board, 50 Somerset, there was a motion to continue and approved, time to be determined, as well as 181 Winthrop Street, motion to continue, time to be determined. Town managers report, the town manager did not, has his spring forum and presentation tonight, which was the focus of his work, along with the budget, along with the election, so he was very busy. But we will, I will ask the town manager if you have any comments or any quick tidbits.
No, just a quick update. Obviously, we'll get into the budget in a minute. Couple of things, we are still, Director Callow and I are working hard to source the material that we need for the Euro Beach, you know, coastal berm that has to go in, the specific material, you know, based on the sieve sample that they took out at the beach. So we're trying to find that and get a close enough match with all the various vendors all the way down to the South Shore, trying to figure out, you know, where we're going to get the materials. So we're working on that diligently. And also, there was, I know there was some concern, we received a few phone calls about some odors yesterday out by Point Shirley. I did reach out to MWRA, they did have some trucks running out of there yesterday. They're going to look into it. I spoke, got a report over, a request over to speak with Chad Whiting, the deputy director of Deer Island Treatment Plan. He's going to get back to me so we can find out what, if anything, happened, so. But just, because it was kind of isolated for a short time out in Point Shirley, so I don't know if it was a truck leaving, maybe a tarp wasn't down all the way or whatnot, so we're trying to find out what the source of that odor was, but we did reach out and now we're working on that, so. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. And we'll be hearing more on the budget in the spring forum. Any questions on those two items that were just briefly talked about? All right. Old Business, town council approve a new fee cost to our current fee structure to include utility pole hearings. Counsel Swope.
As I mentioned, the-
Oh, DeRoz, I'm sorry, Counsel DeRoz.
That one's for me.
Oh, sorry.
Two closely related items, similar arena. Yes, Council President, thank you. During our Finance Subcommittee meeting, we did talk about, as you said earlier, the motion is that the town of Winthrop fee schedule now include a fee cost of $250 for a public hearing requested by a utility company or take any action relative to thereto. As you said, we have been carrying the cost of publicizing, advertising these hearings when they happen. And we discussed it in Subcommittee and had a unanimous positive recommendation that this fee be established, and the utilities pick up that cost moving forward.
All right, so there's a motion on table, the town of Winthrop fee schedule now include a fee of the cost of $250 for a public hearing requested by a utility company or take any action relative thereto. As you said, we have been carrying the cost of publicizing, advertising these hearings when they happen. And we discussed it in Subcommittee and had a unanimous positive recommendation that this fee be established, and the utilities pick up that cost moving forward. All right, so there's a motion on table, the town of Winthrop fee schedule now include a fee of the cost of $250 for a public hearing requested by a utility company or take any other action relative thereto. It came out of committee with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion. See, Counsel Tassinari.
The only I wanted to mention on this was that it does cost the town money to hold these hearings. That's what we really spoke, that's what we spoke about.
Yes.
Mentioned that already.
Yep.
But, so it's only fair that we charge it back to the utility.
Right. This is not a money-making endeavor by any stretch. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Counsel Aiello, Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Costigan?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Counsel Tassinari?
Yes.
Counsel Swope?
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTerry?
Yes. Motion is passed. National Grid, utility pole, Shirley Street, Counsel Swope.
As I mentioned in the text of the motion just a few minutes ago, it came out of committee with a positive recommendation that the town grant permission to National Grid to install underground facilities on Shirley Street beginning at the point that I mentioned. And your, the text of the motion is in the minutes.
All right, and we will just quickly run over the text of the motion so we can put it on the table. The town grant permission to National Grid to install underground facilities on Shirley Street beginning at a point approximately 150 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Shirley and Taft and continuing approximately six feet northwest direction. Install approximately six feet of two-by-four inch PVC DP SHC 60 conduits in Shirley Street from existing pole 438 to private property at 1,001 through 1,015 Shirley Street. Winthrop Mass O to 152, or take any other action relative thereto. This has come out of committee with positive recommendation, any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Aiello, Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Costigan?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Counsel Tassinari?
Yes.
Counsel Swope?
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTerry?
Yes. Motion passed. Winthrop taxi increase on fares, Vice President Belcher.
Again, this came through rules and ordinance, per our ordinance, for increases in taxi fees. This has been done many times under many iterations of the council. They are just trying to increase the fares by $1 each. It came out of committee with a positive recommendation. The text of the motion reads, "I move that the town council vote to increase Winthrop taxi rates to $9 for regular fares. Senior rates will be $8, Winthrop to Winthrop."
All right, motion coming out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Aiello, Counsel DeMarco?
No.
Counsel Costigan?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Counsel Tassinari?
Yes.
Counsel Swope?
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTerry?
Yes. Motion passes. Just a quick update on information on short-term rentals. This has kind of been dragging, and it's, we will be voting on this in May. We are asking the planning board, we know they have a lot in their plate, but this is incredibly important. People have been waiting for an extended period of time, so we're hoping to get a recommendation back from them for our first meeting in May. So that should be on the table in May. New Business, town manager has presented his fiscal budget, and he will go over this in much more detail during the spring forum. Just, you know, we talked about the override and just want to give an update on the process, right? Everybody sees it pass, and now we're waiting to see shovels on the ground and the new building there, and everybody moving over. So just to give you a quick update on process, literally that night, we had been working on drafting an RFQ. The first process is to get an OPM onboard to lead this project with us. That was done, it was put in the central registry, I believe, this week, tomorrow. It goes in Wednesday this week. It was submitted last week for publication this week. It will be out there until the May 1st, right? So we're putting it out there for a couple of weeks. We will hear back. Ultimately, the town manager will pick an OPM. The town manager will be working with the Firehouse Building Committee to get input and make sure that, you know, there's some uniformity there. Once the OPM is onboard, we will hope to have, one of the first things we will ask, we'll go through several items, but we will ask for a timeline. And we will present that timeline to the public. One of the first things that might be done, that you might see physical work, will be potentially in the fall, would be demolition of the middle school and auditorium. Again, the gymnasium will stay, the rink will stay. But there were some things the town also is preparing to do in terms of parks and rec. Parks and Rec is currently housed in the middle school. So one of our most important priorities is to make sure that they have space for the summer and for the fall, and then we will work on trying to convert them, hopefully for a long-term place in the gymnasium. But that is a priority of the town as well. We will, the Firehouse Building Committee, you know, it was kind of like the easy work leading up, and now the hard work begins for the committee. They will hold multiple public hearings for the public to continue input. We've seen alliterations of what we want that building to look like. It might be altered slightly here and there. We will be going through the process again to look, to put out bids for an architect, to see who we end up with. Kessel and Booth has done a lot of work for us over the past couple of years, but we have the ability to go out again to just take a look. We will be taking field trips, so to speak, just to look at some other firehouses in the station. I know Commissioner Dempsey, who's on the Firehouse Building Committee, has already talked about a new station, and not necessarily just for the appearance of it, but to see inside the facilities. You know, one of our goals for this is to make this a green facility, self-sustaining facility as Lexington is. So we want to, again, make sure we're doing this right. We want to be quick but not to rush, and we want to make sure, again, we come in and are under budget. So there will be, the next item here, actually, and I'll just go into that, is just in conjunction but not associated with the Firehouse Building Committee, I will be asking for applications over the next couple of weeks to come in through the council, either to myself or through the town clerk, for people who are interested in being on a firehouse reuse committee. Obviously, the firefighters will be housed in their current facilities until we are ready to physically move to a new facility. But we don't want to make mistakes of the past sometimes with buildings. We want to be up and running with the potential reuse. We want to talk about, you know, different alternatives and to be onboard and involve the community in that process too. So anybody who has an interest in being on a fire station reuse committee, that will involve both stations, Shirley Street as well as Pauline Street, please email the council with an application on that. Appointments, there is one appointment I have. Find it. The application has been circulated to the council. And I make a motion that the town council accept the appointment made by Town Council President LaTerry to appoint Catherine O'Malley to the Affordable Housing Committee with a term expiration date of June 30th, 2028, or take any other action relative thereto. Second, second by Vice President Belcher, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Oh, I'm sorry.
How many people are on that committee?
I think we, we need one more person on the committee, and we have an application that we weren't able to get into the packet, so pursuant to what we had discussed at prior meetings, it will be on, it will be in the packet for the next meeting, and that will fill the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no. The ayes have a congratulations, Catherine. Second round of public comment. Mr. Dowd.
Is this microphone working?
Yes.
Can you hear it?
Yes.
All right. I walked in here at 8:31, and I guess the first round of the public comment was already over. Maybe if you could refine that order of topics, so people get a chance to show up 30 seconds late. Did you start early?
The meeting was posted for 6 o'clock because there's a spring forum at 7:00.
Oh, excuse me. I thought it was 6:30. Thank you very much. Anyways, the manager just talked about the odor problem that was witnessed by a lot of people. It has happened before. But this truck seemed to have an overwhelming type of odor. So the last time it happened was about 25 years ago. I was on the Board of Health, and so we had meetings with the Mass Water Resource, and the problem was corrected. But something happened just the other day, and I know we just went through this with Council President Swope, about the truck route and what could possibly happen on a truck route. So now we've witnessed what could happen on a truck route. There had to have been something different in that truck. I know how it works down there, because I visited the place, you know, 25 years ago when we corrected a similar problem. So there's something different about this one particular truck. So in 25 years, we've never had a situation like we had the other day. So something changed. I'm suggesting that, and I posted this on a post, there's about 20 cameras from Deer Island to Oudman Street. So you can identify this truck and identify the mishap and go down and ask questions like I did 25 years ago to correct the problem. There had to be something different about this one truck, because there might have been hundreds or even thousands of trucks since 25 years ago, and we haven't had an instance of this situation. So now we know that something can happen on a truck route. We're lucky that it wasn't fluoride or chlorine or whatever they ship down, they all kinds of gases. But that can happen too. And it does happen in the world. You know, we're not immune to disasters here. And we had a partial disaster the other day. So I'd like to get to the bottom of this issue that was, you know, brought before us, you know, tonight with the manager and what happened a couple of days ago with the odor. I know people that work there, close friends, and there are situations down there, and we have to stay on top of it. And I posted today, what's to make this situation happen tomorrow or the next day, unless we find out exactly what happened two days ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Scott?
Scott Mahoney-Wright, Precinct 3. Two things I want to say. First of all, to everyone who worked on the campaign for the override, the debt exclusion for the fire station, we had two massive hurdles that we overcame. And I say kudos to everybody in the community for moving us forward on that. The second thing is, I've been thinking a lot about our demographic here in Winthrop. Our second largest population in this community is Hispanic Latino. If you look at our town council meetings, the Firehouse Building Committee meetings, the demographic's missing. It's not present and it's not engaged, at least in my opinion. So I've been looking at other communities around us, and most of those communities, Chelsea, Lynn, East Boston, Saugus, Lynnfield, many other communities, they actually have a liaison to their Hispanic Latino population. I think it could be incredibly beneficial for Winthrop if we had someone who worked in conjunction with the council, the town manager's office, in the community to bridge that gap. So going forward, as we talk about the new fire station process, as we move ahead on that, as we move forward with other things in this community, improving civic engagement. And I think we can do that. It's a shame that people don't show up or they're disengaged for whatever reason, but I think that's something positive that we can actually work for in this community. And I'm sure there are people out there who would be very willing to step into that role and help improve that engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot what the, is this meeting on Zoom?
It is not. The DeLeo Senior Center does not have Zoom capabilities.
Is there something supposed to be done about that?
No.
No one mentioned it, did they?
Yes, Tom.
This, this may not be appropriate, because-
Name and precinct, Tom, again, just for record. Our favorite tree warden.
It's raining, and I want to make a plug for the trees if we have a drought. And I want to recruit an army of-
Name and precinct, Tom, again, just for record. Our favorite tree wouldn't.
It's raining. And I want to make a plug for the trees if we have a drought. And I want to recruit an army of people who would be standing by if there's a drought, because our DPW doesn't have like 20 or 30 extra people around to water the trees if there's a drought. So I want to spread the word that it's okay to water the trees, fill up those green bags, however you can do it. Anybody is welcome to do it if there's a drought. Now, maybe there won't be a drought. Maybe it'll rain for the next 40 days and 40 nights and we have to get the arc ready. Well, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Public Relations. It is rabies season. April 26th, Annual Rabies Clinic. Please call Town Clerk's Office to pre-register, 617-846-1852. April 14th, well, which is today, this week, street sweeping begins, so we encourage people to be well aware of that. Make sure your vehicle is off that side of the street. We want to keep our community looking good, and we need help with the residents to do that. So please be aware of Street Sweeping Week, third week of the month. April 17th, 33rd Annual Winthrop Chamber Awards Night. Ceremony is at the Cottage Park Yard Club at 6 o'clock to 8 p.m. I am sure you can still contact the Chamber and grab a ticket. There are various awards given, including Educational Excellence, Youth Leadership Awards, Coaching Award. I wonder who will get the Coaching Award this year. But there are, it's a great event held by the Chamber, and I encourage people to attend if at all possible. Call the Winthrop Chamber and for more information and for ticket information. Then there's your motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice President Belcher.
Second.
Second by Council DeMarco. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.